Okay, it is 5 o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Mayor Woolridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Gleene?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Okay, at this time we need a motion.
Make a motion. We adjourn to executive session.
Second.
Motion and multiple seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. We're going to adjourn to executive session. We will return and adjourn and start the regular meeting at 6:00 PM. At this time, I'd like a motion.
Make a motion to adjourn from executive session.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we just adjourned from executive session. Our regular meeting was scheduled for 6:00 PM, but we are going to take a five-minute break and reconvene at 6:01.
Mayor, I do need a motion to adjourn from the special-
And a motion to adjourn for that-
Special meeting?
Special meeting.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn from the special-
Second.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Okay, 6:01. Okay, at this time it is 6:01 and we'll call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Mayor Walter?
Here.
Vice Mayor Woolridge?
Here.
Councilmember Hawkins?
Here.
Councilmember Gleene?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Wall?
Here.
Councilmember Larson?
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. At this time, we'll begin with a moment of silence followed by the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item 5 is called to the public. Called to the public for a public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or take action on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion Thank you. Our first speaker is Chaz Smith of Phoenix, Arizona.
Good evening. My name is Chaz Smith. I live at 5346 North La Plaza Circle in Phoenix, Arizona. My wife and I own property in Florence and have for 14 years. I was asked to come here and talk about value. And just a real brief background, I'm a real estate broker. I have been for 34 years. I specialize in the sale of land for development. Sell primarily to multifamily developers, condo developers, et cetera, et cetera. More to the point though, I'm a native of the state of Arizona. I was born in Tucson. I was raised in Douglas. Douglas, Arizona was a terrific place to be raised, let me tell you. It was a town about the same size as Florence. When I lived there, there was a movie theater, two new auto dealers, there were three grocery stores. That I can remember, there were at least two drugstores, men's stores, ladies' stores, et cetera, et cetera. In other words, it was a very vibrant little town. Of my class, graduation class, I would estimate that there are 40 percent of us that went on to college. Now, let's talk about value. And let's talk about value of homes. Value of homes, if you look at the greater Phoenix area right now, we've created 50,000 jobs this past year. Real estate values have gone up 4 percent, and that's substantial, particularly when you look back over the previous 20 years before the recession. Our annual increase in value is about 2.3 percent. So our values are growing up 4 percent. We're creating 50,000 new jobs. Those new jobs create more jobs, a whole lot more jobs. That's why I'm here today, because I'm very concerned about the lack of foresight and fortitude on the part of the city council and the mayor to address the fact that there are some very, very high-profile jobs that are available to you. I think all of you are aware that the penal system, the numbers of employees there are dropping and dropping dramatically over the years, have been since 2005, so you can't rely on that. In addition to that, I understand from one of the previous economic development managers, you have between 600 and 800 people that leave Florence every day to go live someplace else, and that's because their spouses can't find jobs. So I would ask you sincerely if you would take a look at what the opportunities are long-term for the city, and keep in mind, the EPA is Environmental Protection Agency. It is a governmental agency.
Thank you very much. Stacy Gerasimo, manager of communications and public affairs, Florence Copper.
Good evening, Florence Town Council members. My name is Stacy Gramazio, and I'm here representing Florence Copper Inc., located at 1575 West Hunt Highway. I'd like to speak to Agenda item number 8C, a resolution authorizing the town to challenge an amendment to an existing aquifer protection permit known as APP number 101740. Before you vote on this resolution, I wanted to make sure you have as good of an understanding as possible about what this resolution really means. The resolution has nothing to do with the state and federal permits for the upcoming production test facility, nor does the resolution have anything to do with the copper recovery operations that you oppose. The amendment relates to existing water monitoring wells that are on-site now and have been on-site and functioning for 20 years. After 20 years in operation, repairs are required and two of the monitoring wells need to be replaced. These monitoring wells were installed by the previous project owners and help test current water quality conditions. They are there to ensure that the current environmental standards are tracked and able to be maintained. Florence Copper has a regulatory duty and legal obligation to ensure that these monitoring wells are working and functioning properly. This is why this work is being done. These monitoring wells perform the very function that the town council says it is most interested in: water protection. In the 20 years that these wells have been doing their job, there has never been a violation of water quality standards. For the council to now challenge this repair and replacement work, which is what this resolution is proposing, is baffling and leaves me wondering about the information and advice you have been given by those who advise you. This resolution is not a demonstration of your commitment to water protection. It is actually the opposite. Voting for this resolution will be a vote against proper water quality monitoring and a vote against maintaining proper environmental standards. These are important matters, and each member of council has an obligation to get the facts and to be fully informed before voting. To help make sure you have the facts and a better understanding of the work, just come meet with us and take a tour of our facility. Give us the chance to show you our work and address the concerns that you have. I think it's a reasonable thing to ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Cliff, when we get to that agenda item, I'm going to have you speak as to that item, just so we can clarify those statements that were inaccurately stated. Pamela T., I'm going to pronounce it just until you can say it at the podium, please.
Pamela Titus, 5641 West Montebello Way.
Thank you. The pencil was weaker. I apologize.
I have watched the Florence Copper Project drama play out with interest since I arrived in Florence three years ago, and I've remained silent up until now. However, I think it is the time to speak out. First, let me say I am speaking only as a property owner, taxpayer, and concerned citizen. I have no other dog in this fight. However, I do speak with no small amount of authority. I'm a graduate metallurgical engineer with over 40 years of professional experience, including experience in copper hydrometallurgy, in situ uranium mining, and 20 years as a bio-environmental engineer in the United States Air Force Reserve, where one of my primary responsibilities was water quality and water protection. I also carry the qualified person designation with the Mining and Metallurgical Society of America. When I first arrived in Florence, I heard many negative things about the Florence Copper Project, and so I decided I needed to learn more about it. I attended a meeting at Anthem at Merrill Ranch where it was clear that the subject was not the Florence Copper Project, but rather how to stop the Florence Copper Project. I then toured the Florence Copper Project and asked very pointed questions based on the concerns I had heard from others and from what I personally was concerned with as a resident of the area. I was also given reports to review written by the opposition's consultants. Later, I was provided with additional information and reports directly from the Florence Copper Project personnel. Based on my review of the project, I am convinced, as is ADEQ and the EPA, that the Florence Copper Project should be given the opportunity to prove that it can operate its in situ copper leach operation in a safe and economic way. The safeguards that are included in the project design go far beyond what is normally required to protect the environment. I do not believe there is a danger to the aquifer. And contrary to what has recently been stated by Dr. Chris Dumel, a veterinarian, in a recent town hall meeting and in a letter to the editor, there are numerous monitor wells included in the design between the test field and the aquifer to ensure the aquifer's protection. And there are also closed in situ leach fields that have been successfully cleaned up to meet all environmental requirements. Florence's main street has declined significantly in the three years since I've been in the area. The town should be spending money encouraging businesses, not discouraging them. The money proposed for fighting the Florence Copper Project can be better spent by Florence in many ways. I suggest the town council take a harder look at its budget before wasting any more money fighting the Florence Copper Project.
Mr. Greg Koontz of Phoenix.
Mayor, city council, I represent the Martin Zigman property in Pinal County, 400 acres, and I represent 30 people. I would like to say once again that Pinal County has the highest property tax rates in the state of Arizona. One way to hold them at bay is to quit fighting a fight you have continually lost over the Florence Copper Project. From what I see when I'm in town, the people of Florence, in the grand majority, are behind this project. We know that George Johnson and Robert Sarver of Southwest Value Partners are against this project. The city of Florence should quit footing the bill for them because they do not like this project. Let them take their money out of their wallets and pay for it themselves. Save the taxpayers' money and invest it in the other needs of this town. As I see it, your job is to represent all the people, not just the two people with money. Collectively, you're the political leadership of this community. Please step up and lead. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Excuse me. Honorable mayor and councilors, I've come here this evening to support the budgeted legal fees that are line item in our budget. My bride and I moved down here from South Dakota four years ago, and when we were negotiating with Polte, I raised the question about the copper gold mining, and they assured me that Polte Homes nor the town of Florence would ever allow copper mining within the area. Secondly, in the pristine hills of South Dakota, there's a gold mining area up there by the name of Gilt Edge Mines. A Canadian company by the name of Bron began mining there in 1986 through 1999, and at that time, they approached the state of South Dakota and they said, "We can't make enough money. We're walking away from here." And in so doing that, they forfeited 6.4 million in cleanup bonds. They also left the state with 150 million gallons of acid contaminated water. In the year 2000, the EPA in South Dakota declared the Gilt Edge Mine a super fund. To date, they have spent $105 million to abate this longstanding environmental contamination. In addition to that, 20 more million are going to be spent in 2017 and 18, and the state right now sees no end in sight. Thirdly, there's a Canadian uranium mining company by the name of Kamiko, stock symbol CCJ. They are an in situ uranium mining company. They have a mine in someplace in Wyoming and also in the Panhandle of Nebraska. They provide half of the uranium into the United States and 18 percent of the world's uranium. Their corporate policy is in their website, and I'd like to read it. "Kamiko operates only in areas where the natural groundwater is unsuitable for drinking purposes. Water is continually recycled, and the company carefully monitors. When mining is complete, we restore the water and reclaim the land to pre-mining conditions." Fourth, Florence Copper, as you know, is owned by Kosico, stock symbol TGB. Last year, their sales were reported by them at $263 million. Their debt is $360 million. The first quarter of 2017, they reported net income, their words, "under 18 million." Estimated that's the EPS of 7 cents per share, their earnings. Their project, the 21-year project-
Thank you, sir. Thank you. I apologize, but thank you. If you'd like to leave your notes-
Point of privilege?
I'm sorry, sir. I keep it consistent for everybody. I keep it consistent at three minutes, but if you'd like to give your notes to Ms. Garcia, she'll make sure that we all have a copy of it. Thank you for understanding.
My name is Paul Corso Jr. for the record. I'll speak about, well, I'll just start here.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, sir.
Sorry about that. I'm a little shorter than most of the other people that have been up here. I'm not a good talker like everybody else, so I try to keep it short and sweet. I just want, let's see, I recognize you. I'm Ms. Woolridge, and Mr. Hawkins. I ain't from La La Land. I live in Florence. You can call it what you want, okay? It kind of seems funny that you don't want to let the mine go on and proceed, but you want to raise my property taxes, which I have right here, a copy of my property taxes. If anybody don't believe me that you want to raise property taxes. I've lived here for eight years, and my taxes have almost doubled in that short amount of time. It would bring more people and less. It aches for everybody, and I don't know how long I can afford to keep living here, I'll be honest. And I love the community. I really love it. I run my own business. I love everybody in the community, but I don't like being told that I was in La La Land. I really ain't in La La Land. You want to use, adopt a food tax to raise the taxes is one thing you want to do. And I can tell you guys, you know what you said and what you guys are looking at. Your financial manager is looking at adopting a food tax for the homes and charging extra on recreational grounds and facilities. And we all understand that we want the best for our kids as far as that's concerned. Construction taxes, raise here's the one I was talking about, kind of griping about. I don't mean to gripe, but yeah, I do mean to gripe. I don't know what else you want to call it, but here it says you want to adjust rates for sales of property tax. So I guess if I go to sell a home and buy another home, it's going to cost me more in tax money to buy the other home. That guy moving here is going to pay more for that home.
Thank you very much. If you would like to leave any written statements with Lisa, she'll make sure she provides them for us. One thing that I would urge you to do is talk to our town manager, because you had mentioned property taxes. Pinal County Assessor does the property assessments, and as your value of your home increases, that's also reflective in your tax bill. So it's not genuinely us increasing your taxes, but I'd like you to reference those numbers, and our town manager will be happy to speak with you at a later time. And actually, our Joe Jarvis, financial director, will speak with you now. Thank you.
Actually, since I was called out, can I respond?
Yes.
Can I respond legally?
Yes.
Because I wanted to address the same thing regarding taxes. There seems to be some confusion about how taxes are calculated. In Florence, for a long time, we haven't raised taxes in three years, which is unusual for most communities. And in order to maintain services, you do eventually have to raise taxes, but if you look at your tax bill, you'll notice that Florence has the lowest tax rate out of all the taxes you collect, that are all the taxes that are collected. There are different entities that you pay taxes to. Florence is not the only entity on your tax bill that collects taxes. So you need to pay attention to each line item to see who's getting taxes. You have to pay taxes to the county, to the CAC district, to the Florence School District. There are a lot of different entities that are collecting taxes when you get your tax bill. So I would just, it would behoove you to look at those tax bills and notice which entities are collecting what amount for each person, because it's not all from the town of Florence.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, we are closing call to the public at this time unless anybody has any additionals, and it is closed. Item 6 is a presentation. We have a proclamation declaring July 2017 as Parks and Recreation Month in the town of Florence, Arizona, and to encourage residents to get outdoors and enjoy their community through parks and recreation. Mr. Brian Hughes, will you meet me at the podium?
Mayor Walter, if it's okay with you, I was going to invite John Nixon, Megan Seda, Allison Feliz, and Bebo Mendeville to come up too.
Absolutely.
They do all the programming that we're talking about here, so.
All right. So Lisa, what way would you like us to face? Do you want us to face this way or this way? Okay, we'll stand this way. Okay, proclamation, Parks and Recreation Month. We have a lot of exciting things going on too, so. Whereas parks and recreation programs are an integral part of communities throughout this country, including the town of Florence, and whereas our parks and recreation are vitally important to establishing and maintaining the quality of life in our communities, ensuring the health of all citizens, and contributing to the economic and environmental well-being of a community and region. And whereas parks and recreation programs build healthy, active communities that aid in the prevention of chronic disease, provide therapeutic recreation service for those who are mentally or physically disabled, and also improve the mental and emotional health of all citizens. And whereas the parks and recreation programs increase a community's economic prosperity through increased property values, expansion of the local tax base, increased tourism, the attraction and retention of businesses, and crime reduction. And whereas parks and recreation areas are fundamental to the environmental well-being of our community, and whereas parks and natural recreation areas improve water quality, protect groundwater, prevent flooding, improve the quality of air we breathe, provide vegetative buffers to development, and produce habitat for wildlife. And whereas our parks and recreation, natural recreation areas ensure the ecological beauty of our community and provide a place for our children and adults to connect with nature and recreate outdoors. And whereas the U.S. House of Representatives has designated July as Parks and Recreation Month, and whereas the town of Florence recognizes the benefits derived from parks and recreation resources, now therefore be it resolved by Mayor Tara Walter that July 2017 is recognized as Parks and Recreation Month in the town of Florence. I'd like you to say a few words.
Well, I was going to have each of them talk, but I'll do it for them, because I know they get a little nervous. But Megan oversees our summer camp, kids camp program, and we've had 50-some kids, I think, consistently for the last couple of weeks. Ally's putting together the 4th of July Freedom Fest and all the fun stuff that goes along with that. And Bebo has been very busy this summer with the Aquatic Center, which seems to be breaking attendance records every day from what we projected so far this year. So things are going pretty well, and John oversees all the things that these guys helped put together. So I just want to congratulate them and thank them for all their hard work in helping to make July National Parks and Recreation Month.
It's for you guys.
Take a picture.
Thank you. Everyone come out for the shot.
Fit in here somewhere.
Hang on, hold it up. Item 7 is our consent agenda. All items on the consent agenda will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a council member or a member of the public objects at the time the agenda item is called. Item A is approval of professional services contract with New Trend Architectural Services LLC for building official architectural support and one-stop shop consulting services in an amount not to exceed $34,320. Item B is approval of a water line easement between Simon Creek Beacon versus the Fifth LLC, also known as Dollar General, and the town of Florence Medical Office Building to be used for family- to be used for Family Dollar.
Correction, that's Family.
I was going to correct it afterwards, after the sentence. And the Town of Florence Medical Office Building to be used for town-sponsored water systems improvements. We're going to correct Dollar General to read Family Dollar. Item C is approval of a lease addendum between the Town of Florence and the Wiegent Law Offices at Bruin Camp Building. Item D is approval of the May 1st and May 15th Town Council Meeting Minutes. Item E is to receive and file the following boards and commission minutes. The first is April 13th, 2017 Arts and Culture Commission Meeting Minutes. And item two is February 16th and April 20th Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. Does any member of council or public have any items they would like removed at this time? Mr. Billingsley.
To your point, Mayor, regarding Dollar General and Family General, this may not be referring to location, but the company, Simon Creek, builds dollar stores all over the place. So with your approval tonight, we'll just make sure that the right company name is on there because it may be correct. So if you'd allow us to verify that we put the right company name on the approval of the easement, that would be great.
Yes, you have that approval. Okay, all in favor? I need a motion.
I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda as discussed.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Item eight is new business. Item A is resolution number 1627-17. I am going to turn it over to Joe Jarvis at this time.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Again, like I was at the last meeting, I'm really pleased at how many citizens are here at the meeting in order to be involved in the budget process. It is great to be in a location where citizen engagement is possible as we develop the budget. And this is not done in a closed door. This is done in an open session for the conversation and direction from the council as to how to develop the budget. Madam Mayor, we are presenting a budget that has a balanced general fund, which is a great feat considering the number of changes we had to experience, considering that we had a decrease in potential revenue, considering we have an increase in costs, considering all factors related. The budget that we're presenting to you this evening is a group effort. As I discussed at the last meeting, when it came down to the staff to present ideas to the council, we came together as a team in order to present an idea to you for your consideration that allowed some changes for employees and required some changes within our departments in order for us to cut back in specific areas where we found necessary and found prudent. So at this time, I have available the entire budget on this jump drive for us to go through if you would like to. I have the entire CIP for us to go through if you would like to. I am ready to take your comments and concerns or questions about the budget, but I'm also interested in you considering resolution number 1627-17. And if we continue to proceed as, if we continue on this path, it is my intent and staff's intent to bring back the final budget for your consideration at the July 17th meeting. At that meeting will be the public hearing for the truth in taxation, the tax levy, the final budget, and the budgets for the special districts. Those public hearings would happen on that evening. If the final budget is adopted at the July 17th meeting, it is the intent of staff to bring back to you for your consideration the tax levy number. This evening, we are not adopting a tax levy rate, but I went forward with assumptions in the budget in order to present it to you for this evening. And at the July 17th meeting, I'll be prepared to talk about what that tax rate means. It has always been a challenge as a public servant to help try and communicate the balance between the tax rate and what I actually pay in property taxes because there's a number of factors that are available. And that's part of what I was discussing in the hallway, is trying to explain how those dynamics work together. And at this time, I'm going to stop talking and give you all a chance to talk.
Okay. Manager Billingsley.
Joe, you said it, but I want to make sure that it's very clear to those folks watching us on TV what a tentative budget is. So what is the council considering tonight versus a final budget and the state laws associated with that in terms of timeline? And then secondarily, reaffirm those dates again for the truth in taxation, the final budget, opportunities to comment, et cetera.
Thank you. First item is, the town council is required to adopt a tentative budget by the third Monday in July. So we still have that available window. That requirement is set by Arizona State Revised Statutes. What the tentative budget is, is the town council is stating to the staff, this is the ceiling, this is the top the budget will be. The budget cannot increase above this number. It also provides the opportunity for council and community and staff to work together to talk about what that final budget should be. The final budget can be equal to or less than the tentative budget. This evening, we are setting that ceiling, presenting that ceiling for your consideration for adoption. And that tentative budget includes all the aspects that we have talked about at our numerous public meetings and budget committee meetings. We will then come back and present to you the final budget once the tentative budget is adopted. The final budget doesn't have to be adopted by some certain date, but it's strongly encouraged to be adopted, I believe, by the middle of August is the encouragement because you're already into the year. That final budget, as I stated before, has to be equal to or less than the tentative budget. And the final budget, in order for it to be considered, public hearing has to be held, which will be held in the second, excuse me, July 17th. That's when the public hearing will be held. In addition, Arizona Revised Statutes mandate clear direction as to the situation where a tax levy changes. As I was discussing with the citizens in the hallway, the tax rate for the town of Florence has not changed for a number of years. But according to the assessor, the county assessor, the property values of homes and businesses and industrial property has changed. This year, we're seeing an increase in those rates. Because the town of Florence is anticipating collecting more revenue than previous years because the property values have increased, the town of Florence is required to hold a TNT public hearing in addition to a tax levy public hearing. So we will be holding those public hearings on July 17th. At that opportunity, the council will be giving direction to staff as to what you anticipate, what you're thinking about to set the tax rate. The town council can do three different things: increase, maintain, or decrease that tax rate. That tax rate will determine the total amount of property taxes that a particular property owner will pay. So the dates that we're looking at in the future, if we continue on this path that we're on at this moment, which certainly can change per your direction, is July 17th, we will hold the public hearings. July 17th, the final budget will be presented for your consideration. Then on August 7th, the town council will consider and decide, potentially decide, what that rate should be. The reason why there's some constraint as to when the rate needs to be considered is that the county requires the town council to tell them what the rate will be by the beginning of August. And so that rate needs to be determined by the beginning of August. And so those are the deadlines that we are working with.
Thank you very much for that explanation. Are there any members of council that have any questions, comments, concerns?
Yeah, I have a question. There are some items, or at least one item in the budget that I'm questioning. Did I raise that question tonight or?
Yes.
Okay. I'm questioning the cost for the fitness center. If we look at our budget and fiscal policy, it says that the adult athletic facilities and services should be a high-range recovery activity, should be recovering 60 to 100%. If I look at what's proposed, we're getting about 30%.
Okay.
So I would suggest removing the fitness center.
Okay. If it's all right, Madam Mayor, can I invite Brian to come up and talk about his particular department?
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
Please do.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I just pulled up some information when Joe asked me to look into it as far as what our usage is and kind of what our expenditures have been historically. And so I believe our expenditures have been around about $105,000 on average for the past five years, and our revenues have been on average about $33,000 on average. So Mr. Anderson's correct, we're in that 30 to 35% cost recovery. Based on that, though, right now, we've been seeing, last fiscal year, we had 760 unique members that visited almost 16,000 times at the facility. And this year, our numbers are up as far as unique visitors, 765, so only five more, but they've actually been using it a little bit less, we're around 14,000. So the visits, the numbers as far as unique visitors have been up, but their visits to the facility are down. So another statistic, again, being aware of the budget, a couple of years ago, our budget for the fitness center was about $125,000. The proposed number this year is 90,000. So we've been conscious of the cost of that facility, and we've been able to reduce it about $35,000 over a two-year period. The goal is always to reduce the subsidy as much as possible, but because of the facility's age, the equipment, and some of the other factors, no locker rooms, things like that, I think we're kind of toeing a line there as far as what's affordable to the citizens. That, and there's not any other facility here in the downtown area for folks to use or in town in general. So unless you are a member up in Anthem or Sun City, those aren't available to the general public in this area. So if there was a private facility in town, then maybe that's somewhere where we would kind of divest our interest, but as of right now, there isn't that available. So we're providing a service that apparently, according to our numbers, is being used by a significant amount of people, but that's the information I have for you this evening.
I appreciate that. Any additional comments?
I just want to make a comment. As you have stated, Brian, the fitness center is serving the southern portion of Florence. It's the only place around here where people can go and work out. I go myself to the fitness center occasionally, and I see every day young people, when I go in there, young people working out. And I don't think that it, even though we are spending more in that area, I think that it is a service that is much needed in this area. If you take that out, there is not going to be any place where people can go and work out.
I agree. I agree with you. We need...
Well, I would say that we need to either change our policy or we need to be more efficient. You know, we have a budget policy, folks, and we're violating it.
Okay, and I'm glad that you brought up the policy. We can definitely look at that. And I will ask Mr. Billingsley.
I do certainly understand the council member's statement regarding the policy. The only caveat I could provide, just from reading that policy and working with Brian on ways to reduce those costs for budget purposes, is the fact that although there is a 50% recovery rate, if you look at it as a blanket statement regarding the recreation center, there's a 30% recovery rate for seniors. So because it's a social service that we provide in the community, I would ask Brian, what's the percentage of those unique users that are seniors because the recovery would be significantly different and maybe more normalized on average if there's a high percentage of seniors using that facility?
Our senior usage, our six-month, our senior monthly fitness pass is about 20% of our overall usage, and that's the monthly pass, and we have about 8.75% of that is a six-month pass. So we're probably close to 30% on senior usage.
Brian, have we considered talking with the county to see if we want to have a regional gym located in Florence?
Mayor Walter, council members, I have had some talks with some administration at the county, and there is, they're struggling with providing a fitness center for their employees and things too, and obviously members of the county, or residents of the county. But I think there is potentially a desire, but we'd have to follow up with them and see where they want to take that.
Have you approached Pulte?
I have not approached Pulte specifically for what, Mayor, or Councilmember Anderson.
For renting their facility or allowing people to use their facility. They are allowing people to use the soccer fields now, so it's worth asking.
Mayor Walter, Councilmember Anderson, I did call Chad Price up at the Parkside Community Center today, and he said they do not allow non-residents of the Pulte community to have memberships at their fitness center.
I say they're allowing them on soccer fields. Okay, but that's...
Councilmember Anderson, I believe it's a rental, and they're doing that on, I think, a case-by-case basis when it also meets the needs of their residents. I know particularly their private, there's a private soccer club that rents those fields at use.
Yeah.
But it also serves the residents there, and they do not have to provide that service when they do that.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think when you talk about partnering with someone else with the county, you're still talking about investing more money than we're investing right now because if I were the county, I wouldn't invest in the facilities that we have now because they are so outdated and old. So to subsidize that program right now is going to be a lot less than trying to come up with a, to partner with someone else at this time.
I just think that building might be used for other purposes also, that, you know, we talked about a youth center, things like that. So we could get more involvement, you know, seeing how that building is used and the attendance is there. And, you know, I understand people want to go to a fitness center, but we're a small town. And how many towns our size have that the town is launching a fitness center? Now you have to think about why we don't have a fitness center. It's because the companies that run these fitness centers have looked at it, and it doesn't make sense, you know, to build a fitness center in Florence because it's not cost justifiable. Yet we put that burden on the town. I just think that's something that we shouldn't do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other questions? Well, I'd like to say a comment. I really appreciate all of the effort that's gone into the budget, the presentations. Again, Councilmember Wall and Councilmember Galen for serving on the budget committee and continuously making sure we were apprised of what was, you know, going on. And I want to make sure that everybody knows all of the hard work and effort that went on into the budget on behalf of staff, council, gaining feedback from the community. So with that, we do need an approval or a disapproval of resolution 1627-17.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 1627-17, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, adopting the tentative estimates of the amount required for the public expense for the Town of Florence for fiscal year 2017 through 2018.
I'll second. Motion and multiple seconds. All in favor? Aye. All opposed?
Nye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item B is resolution number 1628-17, which is the discussion approval/disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Penile County, Arizona, adopting the Town of Florence recommended fiscal year 2017-18 employee compensation and classification plans. Mr. Scott Barber.
Mayor Walter, members of the council, we're asking you this evening for your passage of this resolution to adopt the employee classification and compensation plans that are proposed for the upcoming fiscal year. It's been the policy, the practice of the town for many years to have all of this uploaded into the budget, but to bring to you this specific adoption. It specifically speaks to the classifications that each of our employees are assigned. We always use... We always use comp before class, but it really goes the other way. Each one of our position classifications is assigned to a pay range, and then the pay range is also part of the adoption process this evening. All of the information that is included here is that which was discussed in our budget study session. And certainly, I think I can speak for our town leadership team in saying that we're absolutely delighted to be able to bring to you this evening for consideration a 5% general adjustment for our full-time employees. It does two things. Obviously, number one is it provides a pay increase to our employees to the base compensation moving forward. Moreover, though, it does help us to maintain our competitiveness, if you will, in the marketplace. We compare our midpoints to other midpoints as we consider our employee compensation classification system. And so as we do a general adjustment, that means that our pay plan, which is part of the approval this evening, moves up by 5%. And our employees who are in those ranges maintain their relative position in the pay range, which obviously means that they receive a 5% pay increase. So that's a big part of it. Also, the organizational changes that were discussed with you in our budget study session are included in this plan as well. And the class titles that are being added and being deleted are included in the resolution. So with that as a basis for any discussion or any questions you'd like to put to us this evening, I would make one, or two notations. We were a bit crunched for time, and so there's two typographical errors that occurred in the classification plan, both on the first page. One was range 59 and 60 were identical, and that was obviously a typographical error. So range 59 has been appropriately adjusted. And also inexplicably, in the indication of whether our police sergeant classification was exempt or non-exempt, that was a mistake. Our police sergeant classification is NE or non-exempt. And so that correction was made, and we did get the corrected class plan to our clerk this morning so that she had the most up-to-date information. So with those corrections noted, I stand to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions by council? There are no questions. Again, appreciate the work that's gone into this. And with that, do you have any other... Okay, we need a motion.
I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1628-17, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, adopting the Town of Florence FY 2017-2018 employment compensation and classification plans.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item C. Item C is Resolution Number 1629-17, which is the discussion, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving and authorizing the Town of Florence to pursue the investigation and the full prosecution slash litigation of the application for aquifer protection permit, other amendment, and APP permit number P-101704, and the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution and declaring an emergency. Mr. Brent Billingsley, and also I would like to have our attorney speak to this point as well.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. Just as a quick summary, the resolution proposed before you and submitted to you involves, what came to the attention of the town, is two replacement wells that were drilled. And from the documentation that's been reviewed thus far, the replacement wells apparently were constructed in January of this year, 2017. But there is now an application or other amendment that it's called to authorize or for the ADQ agency, the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, to consider the work that was done previously. Those, that work by ADQ is administratively done, it's pending right now. And the proposed resolution authorizes the manager and the town's attorneys and other officials as necessary to investigate the circumstances of that and take whatever actions are deemed necessary.
Okay, thank you very much. Mr. Billingsley.
I think Cliff covered it.
Excellent. Are there any members of council that has anything that they'd like to...
I'd like to clarify, this is very clear. It says that we are having our attorneys investigate what's going on here. We would be remiss not to do this. This is not an action to do anything, it's just to give them the opportunity to investigate it, to see what's going on. So I think that this whole thing was misrepresented tonight.
Any other members of council? With that, we need a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 1629-17, a resolution of the Town of Florence, Pinellas County, Arizona, approving and authorizing the Town of Florence to pursue the investigation of and the full prosecution litigation of the application for aquifer protection permit, other amendment, and APP permit number P-101704, and the taking of all other action necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution and declaring an emergency.
I'll second.
Second.
Motion and multiple seconds, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Moving on to the town manager's report.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I have a couple items for this evening. The first is to announce to council and the public some additional good news. We were just notified last week by Ms. Erica Castro from Salt River Project that Salt River Project has, let me read a paragraph here. "We are steadfast in our commitment to partner with nonprofit organizations that provide meaningful and beneficial programs to our customers and our communities. Arizona can only be a great place to live when we work together to accomplish our goals. To that end, SRP recognizes the value of the programs provided by the Town of Florence and is pleased to provide a contribution of $5,000 to sponsor the 2017 Fourth of July Freedom Fest." So congratulations, and we want to make sure that we let SRP know how much we appreciate their support. Lastly, and this is a fun little tidbit, Megan Seta, who was here earlier this evening, oh, there she is. It was brought to my attention last week that she took and passed the Certified Parks and Recreational Professional Exam. The Certified Parks and Recreation Professional Certification is the national standards for parks and recreation specialists and professionals that want to be on the forefront of their profession. Attaining the CPRP designation shows that she has met the educational and experience qualifications and illustrates her commitment to the profession as well as her knowledge and understanding of key concepts in parks and recreation. Thank you very much, and congratulations, Megan.
Congratulations. We have a second call to the public at this time. Are there any call to the public forms? I do have one gentleman, and you can come up at this time, that had already submitted to Lisa. Yes, sir.
Thank you. I just have the business projections left, and the numbers were taken either off of the website for Taseco or the Wall Street Journal. As I indicated the first time, seven cents per share were their earnings the first quarter of this year. They are projecting long-term copper prices at $3. The metal futures this afternoon closed at $2.59, and I don't remember when we had $3 copper. They closed this afternoon at $2.59. The stock value in the 2012-2013 period was 40 to 50 cents a share for Taseco's stock. And Wall Street consensus was that the stock prices on 5.2 of 2017 were projected to be $1.92. They closed Friday at $1.15. Conseco refinanced their debt last week, and this afternoon, the stock rose 3 cents and closed at $1.18. I would just make this comment. It would appear to me that the big-money boys on Wall Street are not buying what Taseco is trying to sell. I don't know the Arizona state laws, but God help us if the governor and the legislature allow this experiment within the aquifers of Florence and Pinellas County. I would submit that if it fails, all this Canadian company has to do is file bankruptcy and walk away. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Closing call to the public, now call to the council. That was call to the public. Oh, I apologize. Go ahead, ma'am, you can step up to the podium, please state your name. And we'll need to make sure that you have a form filled out for... Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Liz Washington, I live in Sun City, Anthem. Do you need my address?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
7484 West Noble Prairie Way, Florence, Arizona. In regard to the copper mine and the aquifer, how much money has been spent to date? And it seems to me, reading that, it's like giving an open checkbook to spend whatever they need. I've done some research, my own, and I don't, it's not like it's an open mine. I think the community needs the jobs, and I think it should go through. Not the, I see no problem with it. It doesn't bother me, it's below the water levels. And I've read a lot on situ mining, and theirs is a closed, encapsured mining process. I don't really see an issue. But I'd like to know how much is going to be spent, because that affects the bottom line.
Thank you, ma'am. If you would like afterwards, you can speak with our finance director, he'd be happy to let you know. We have open books in regards to what we spend. And just for a point of clarification, we do not hand over an open checkbook to the staff.
That's what it sounds like.
Everything's always run by council.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, appreciate that. Okay, moving on, closing call to the public, call to the council. And Councilmember Larson.
I have nothing today.
Councilmember Wall.
I just have a couple things. Point of clarification, the Town of Florence is not the only party that is spending money on legal issues pertaining to Florence Copper. And in fact, the amount of money the town is spending is minimal compared to others who are opposed to the mine. Two other items, just want to thank SRP very much for $5,000 for our Freedom Fest. It's going to be a great party, great fireworks. I hope everyone in town can attend, and even from outside town. And last but not least, congratulations, Megan, wonderful accomplishment.
Thank you. Councilmember Anderson.
Yes, I would just like to point out that this whole copper project has been going on for years. We had a series of meetings when it was Curus, and they applied to have the zoning change. It was overwhelmingly voted down. There's been two elections since, and the council members that have run for the mine were overwhelmingly lost to people who were supporting the mine. So the council, at least I think, we have the support of the citizens here to support the mine fight. And you look at $200,000, $250,000 in our budget of, what, $30 million? It's rather insignificant to what we're doing here. But we feel that we are obligated to protect our drinking water. Thank you.
Thank you, very well said. Councilmember Galen.
I don't have anything to...
Councilmember Hawkins.
Well, once again, I would like to point out that I have, and if anybody can show me one, that's great, but show me any mining town that's prospering, that's growing, that's bringing in new residents. There, I don't know of any in Arizona. And there's isn't any reflection on the towns that have mines. But they're not places that people are busting down the doors to move into. They're, and the mines do not do that much for the community that everybody keeps saying, oh, it's going to do all these miraculous monetary benefits. But anyway, let's look at it realistically here. And then water is the most important thing we've got in the West right now, and people need to wake up. Now, lately, we've got a few people that write letters to the editor and don't have their facts straight. But Ms. Bonnie Barriola, she wrote a letter to the editor here a week or two ago. And once again, she's claiming that these handicap ramps, which are called bump outs or whatever. Anyway, we had to do that as part of our downtown beautification project because for us to get the grant money, the American Disabilities Act requires us to have proper handicap ramps. Those ramps have to be, I think it's one inch to a foot rise, is as much as you can go. So in order to make them legal, the sidewalks aren't wide enough to make a ramp from the curb, the previous curb, or they would go right into the building. So we had to go out into the road, and we did it as attractively as we could. Another thing she brought up again was the lights that were on Main Street. Our main goal on that was to take down the overhead lights, streetlights, was our main goal on that, and get rid of the wiring and make it more attractive downtown, bring back the historic look of the town. And along the way, the State Historical Commission told us that we had to remove those lights, or they would revoke our grant. That was the reason. We didn't plan on taking those lights out, we had to do it. The state made us do it, so I wanted to correct that. And then she also put in there that we closed the business on Main Street, Conquest Arms, with only 15 minutes to vacate the building. That was doing an excellent business and creating excellent tax source for the town. We did not close that business. What we did was told the property owner, and he had weeks to correct it. But we told him he had problems with his getting it up to code. And we had been dealing with him for well over a year. And we thought we were almost there, and he was notified, but apparently he didn't notify his tenants, which was Conquest Arms. It's not the town's place to go to your renters if you're renting a house out or renting a business out. It's not up to the town to give information to your renters on problems that the property owner is having. So Mr. Cox, he could have notified them and told them, hey, I'm not going to bring it up to code. I'm going to fight the town, and they would have had enough notice. So we didn't just go in there and in 15 minutes close them down. We closed the building because it was unsafe. And if you're interested as to all the details, we're having a hearing on it Wednesday at 10 o'clock, right here. 10 o'clock right here. So, anybody that's interested in that, to satisfy you. One other thing, Bonnie also stated that it's imperative that you intend- she wants people to attend this meeting also. And express your- she's asking people to express your desire for the council to insist that town staff work toward preserving rather than destroying that which has been created by prior staff and councils, speaking of the historic district. We have done numerous, numerous projects since I've been on the council in the last 10 years, helping preserve some of these buildings, between the Brunnen Camp Building, the Silver King Hotel, and then the beautification project that helped, I think, make the downtown a lot more attractive. It's stuff like this that hurts the town more, these accusations. When people are looking to come here to invest, when they hear these accusations, if they take them as fact without looking into the facts, then they might not want to come here and invest money. But a lot of these falsehoods need to stop, and, you know, they're doing more damage than- and they just keep going over and over, the same thing, and it's- that's false stuff. Anyway, that's all I've got to say. I think we need, you know, people need to start being more positive and appreciating what we've done. And anybody that wants to see a list of what we've accomplished, I'd be glad to get them a list, and it's- you'll be amazed at the facts and at how much staff and council has accomplished. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
May I just point out one thing that Councilman Hawkins addressed there? This is a hearing that's going to happen, and only witnesses that have already been identified can testify at that hearing. So, if people think they're going to come and testify, that's not going to happen.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Woolridge.
I think a lot has already been said, but I'm still hearing from people who are saying that most of the council, or actually, they're actually saying none of us have attended the tour at the copper project, and that's absolutely not true. So, I would just say that when you-
Twice.
-give talk, do we need to raise our hands for everybody who's taking-
I've been out there twice and had meetings with them numerous times besides the tour, so.
Thank you, Bill. I just wanted to say that that's absolutely not true. So, I would implore you that when you're giving people talking points, that you're giving them true talking points. Make sure they're getting the real facts, because then you make people feel bad when they are not given the truth, and then I have to respond to them and tell them, that's not a fact. I have been on the tour and actually sat down with management. And I don't see the need to sit down with management again because your process has not changed supposedly, so I don't think I'd be giving new information unless something is entirely different from the original plan.
Thank you. You took my talking point.
Oh, sorry. I'll take it back.
But I have one more. No, I appreciate that. I do want to invite everybody out Fourth of July to our amazing festival that will be taking place at Heritage Park, the Fourth of July Festival that will be taking place at Heritage Park. I hope everybody comes out and enjoys the festivities. Brian, I believe they start at, is it noon or 3?
The Aquatic Center is open from noon to 5 for open swim, and it's free that day. And then, the festivities start at Heritage Park at 3:00 PM with mud volleyball, I think cornhole and smother act bingo. And then, live music begins at 6:00 PM, and then the fireworks are at 8:30.
Excellent. I hear councils talking about putting a team together for mud volleyball. I'm kidding. That would be amazing, though, right?
Save you a spot.
No, so I- I hope to see everybody out there, and that was a joke, Mark. Please don't print that. We're not having a team. So, I hope to see everybody there. Our next meeting will be the third Monday of July. We will not have a meeting that first Monday of July unless some urgent business arises in the Town of Florence. So, with that, I'd like to thank everybody that attended tonight's meeting, and with that, we need a motion.
Make a motion, will you, Jerry?
Second.
We have multiple motions in multiple seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Motion carries.